This is the Commissioner meeting of July 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Four, public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board, maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGroot, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, we have no proclamation certificates and presentations. Number seven, public hearing. A, final adoption ordinance 24-04. At our regular meeting held on June 26, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of July 3rd, 2024, together with a public notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. An ordinance of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the implementation of parking meters and fees, annual parking passes and fees, public parking for electric vehicles and fees located on Sussex County property, commonly known as portions of 43 to 47 High Street, Newton, New Jersey, Block 5.01, Lot 19. We get a motion that the public hearing be opened.
Still moved.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Schick, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot, in a second.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All in favor? Aye. Sorry, I was a little fast. Motion carries.
Trying to get that right.
Motion that this ordinance be finally adopted.
Still moved.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Got it.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden, in a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
B, final adoption ordinance 24-05. At our regular meeting held on June 26, 2024, we introduced for first reading the following ordinance, which was advertised in the New Jersey Herald, issue of July 3rd, 2024, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. An ordinance of the County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the establishment of meter parking lot definitions, parking meter fees, permitted parking, additional rules and regulations, and public parking spaces for charging of electric vehicles located on Sussex County property, commonly known as portions of 43 to 47 High Street, Newton, New Jersey, Block 5.01, Lot 19. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be opened?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and Commissioner Hayden, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this ordinance? Okay. Can I get a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot, in a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick, in a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center?
Still moving.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney, in a second, from Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up your microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moving.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney, in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The floor is open for agenda topics only. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden, in a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number nine, commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
Okay. So, I guess we all know that the gazebo went. Unfortunately, it was a necessary evil. I talked to the police chief, and he explained that a lot of the problem is that you can't keep rearresting these people, that they're not going to be held on anything, that because of bail reform, we're stuck with what we have. So, as a result, there was no better option, and as it was pretty much dilapidated. Moving it elsewhere, something I thought we could do, that wasn't going to happen. So, fortunately, it is what it is. If you're upset with anything, look forward to, look at those who pushed the bail reform and didn't back the police, because it makes their job tougher, according to the chief when I spoke to him. So, there's that. I went to Skuma today, looked at the dumps, and worked it for almost 80 years, they think. That's a great thing. And facility is state of the art compared to the rest of what we have in the state. And Sussex County Library kicked off its summer reading program, and if you go on the website, you can follow that and get involved, because that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot?
All right. Just some quick updates. Regarding the county seed library, I met with Snup Town, which is a partisan Vernon area gardening club, just to explore educational opportunities that they could offer in phases three and four of our plan, which, as mentioned a couple meetings ago, is the educational portions of everything. But they also introduced me to their contacts from a local company that provides them with seeds, which the contact also reassured me that they were willing to provide us with seeds as well, something I'll have to mention later in two. But overall, it was a productive conversation, and they mentioned that they would be happy to help advertise our program as well by spreading the word and distributing flyers if that's something you want to explore or need help with. Aside from that, the Ag promotion of our Tri-County Route 519 that I spoke about last meeting, I spoke directly with the majority of commissioners from Hunterdon County who were supportive of the initiative. My commissioner colleague from Warren County is introducing the idea to her fellow commissioners on the Board of Warren County Commissioners tonight, so she'll provide me with an update tomorrow or the next day after. And then, as suggested from Deputy Director Chris Carney, I spoke with the one and only Tanya Horstfield, who loved the idea. She thought it was great, and she was willing to help assist or collaborate in whatever direction we decided to go. Aside from that, the Division of Health, Office of Public Health and Nursing, Spotted Lantern Fly Program, County of Sussex Office of Mosquito Control is participating in the NJ Department of Agricultural, Spotted Lantern Fly Grant, the health control investigations experienced across the county, which I know is happening quite a bit up in Montague and Wantage. The Office of Mosquito Control is utilizing this grant to purchase and distribute spotted lantern fly traps. Free spotted lantern fly traps are still available to all Sussex County residents. Each resident can receive a maximum of two traps per household. Residents who have not received their traps yet or who are interested in the program and want to learn more can call the Office of Mosquito Control at 973-940-5225 or visit www.sussex nj.us/lanternfly. Following up on mosquito control program, the Office of Mosquito Control has submitted 160 pools of adult mosquitoes for mosquito-worn disease testing. One pool, actually, from Montague Township did test positive for West Nile virus. According to the recent NJ Health Vector Warrant Surveillance Report, it stated the experience above average West Nile activity in mosquitoes compared to past seasons. Residents should be taking steps to avoid being bitten by infected mosquitoes by using EPA-registered insect repellents when outdoors, wearing long sleeves, shirts, and long pants pants, and mosquito-proofing yards by emptying standing water after a rainfall event. For more information, please visit the mosquito website at www.sussex nj.us/mosquito. And then, speaking of Montague, I did attend Montague Day, the council, rec. committee, and all the individuals associated with Montague Day. Really did a wonderful job. They had a great firework celebration at night. So, yeah.
Nice. Commissioner Schick?
Thanks, Director. As reported in our last meeting, I've been working together with the college on some things, and was very excited to introduce that they're moving forward with their ROTC program. Dr. Homer is here this evening to tell us later on in our meeting more about it, to explain to the Board as requested by Deputy Director Carney and also for the public to hear. Some of the highlights at the college, you know, they were four straight years. Their enrollment numbers have increased. Their grand opening of the Culinary Institute happened this year. They received the Business Innovation Award from the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce. They also broke ground on the addition to the Optics Center, which was funded by the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act. Lastly, they have a three-in-one program between Ramapo College and themselves that allows students to pursue bachelor's degrees while benefiting from substantial savings. All of these highlights show what a good job and the growth of the community college and their commitment to our community and opportunities for our community students. On June 30th, I attended the 75th anniversary of the War Memorial at the Veterans War Memorial at High Point. What a celebration, and just, you know, I took so many videos. It was amazing. But the rains came, so we all had to run real quick. So, a lot of us went home very wet. But it was a fabulous, fabulous abbreviated, but fabulous celebration. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Sussex County Water Management, and I have a meeting with the Board of Ginny's House on Wednesday of next week.
Nice.
That's all I have.
Deputy Director Carney?
Thank you. First, I want to start with thank Bruce Scruton here, because I've got some good information. All right. So, Sussex County DPW purchased under ARPA projects. We got our 24 Elgin-Worland sweeper that was purchased through Timberman Equipment for the price of $370,504.01. Representatives from Timberland were on-site to provide initial training and service procedures to county staff, equipment operators, and fleet mechanics. The sweeper has been assigned to the Vernon District. DPW placed the sweeper into service on July 1st, 2024. With the purchase of the sweeper, DPW will have one sweeper at every garage. That's nice. And this is compliance with the County Highway Agency Stormwater Permit issued by the NJDP, requires sweeping of all of our 620-lane miles of county routes three times per year. Another mandate that we're hard to come up with. Division of Transportation Operations, allway inflammation at the intersection of County Route 517, McAfee-Glenwood Road, and Lake Pochon Road in Vernon Township. As a result of engineering study conducted by the Sussex County Division of Engineering, an allway stop has been implemented at the intersection of County Route 517, McAfee-Glenwood Road, and Lake Pochon Road. I thought there was another one, too. Didn't we have one in Wantage?
519 and Liberty Hill, 650.
Yes. That was Jack's request about three years ago, two years ago. Isn't that? That's, that was it. When he first spoke at our meeting, we were like, who's this guy? Now he's sitting here with us. This is where you want to pay attention a little bit. I like giving these reports. This is from District 24. Let me actually start here. All right. I'm going to kind of bounce back and forth a little bit. Fantasia, Assemblywoman Fantasia, Farmland Preservation Bill enacted into law. Assemblywoman Fantasia's bill funding preservation efforts at five farms in northwestern New Jersey is now law. The bill S2793 and A3698 reallocates 1.723 million from corporate tax revenue and a 2009 Farmland Preservation Fund to State Ag Development Committee, which oversees the state farmland preservation program. The committee will use the money for grants to help farmers pay for their approved preservation projects. Preservation from preserving farmland throughout New Jersey and especially the northwest part of the state ensures a generation of residents will know where their food comes from, how livestock is cared for, and the permanent value of our ag communities. We help, we have to help farmers if we want to live up to our Garden State slogan and preserve the way of life cherished in New Jersey. Fantasia said, "I know these farms will put the funds to good use and deserve the support." The grants will go toward preservations at two farms in Stillwater, in Wantage Townships in Sussex County, two farms in Delaware Union Townships in Hunterdon County, and a farm in Blairstown in Warren County. A nice piece of bill that went through. Senator Parker Space, open space preservation bill for recreation was also enacted into law. It appropriates $101,696,535 from constitutionally dedicated CBT revenues, not CBD revenues, CBT revenues, DEP for local government open space acquisition and park development. Route 15, big mistake today. I thought it was open. It was a big mistake. It is not. So, concerning Route 15, State DOT has another call with legislators and other officials tomorrow afternoon. Work on the temporary bridge is rapidly occurring, and from previous indications from the State DOT, they should be on schedule to have the southbound lanes in Jefferson reopen July 19th. And actually, when I made that mistake today, one of the workers actually said the same thing. So, I don't know how people got home after July 4th weekend, but that must have not been good. So, state budget. On Friday, June 29th, Governor Murphy and a Democrat-controlled legislator enacted the largest state budget in New Jersey's history, a whopping $56.6 billion for fiscal year 2025, a 4% or $2.3 billion increase since the last year, and a 63% $21.9 billion increase since Governor Christie. Senator Space and Assemblymember Fantasia Ganimore oppose the budget and its tax fee hikes to fund it. Fantasia and Ganimore spoke out on the Assembly floor opposing the budget and supporting taxpayers. Yes, I have more. Just one last thing, because I believe this is an important piece to our education, our school, our protection of our kids. Sussex County Andy Molehill was replaced on the State Board of Education. Andy was a true champion for parental rights and protect our children from obscenities and crazy woke ideas from the Murphy administration. Space and almost the entire Republican Senate Caucus oppose confirming Molehill's replacement. I'm just going to read you Senator Space's quote. They're very friendly, and I think Andy did a very good job in that position, and it's a shame that he got taken out of that position. So, Senator Parker Space made the following remarks on the Senate floor in opposition to the removal of State Board of Education Vice President Andy Molehill and encouraged his state colleagues to reject the nomination of Dr. Claudine Keenan. Today, I rise in opposition to the removal of Andy Molehill from the State Board of Education and encourage my colleagues in this body to reject the nomination of Dr. Claude Keenan as his replacement. This attempt to remove Mr. Molehill is yet another example of Governor Murphy's taking action to remove or replace valued public servants who speak out against and oppose the administration for simply bringing a different voice to the debate. It is no surprise, therefore, that only those who have been vocal on the parental rights issue in the State Board of Education have been targeted by Governor Murphy for removal. So, kudos to Parker, Senator Space, for doing what he did. Kudos and thank you to Mr. Molehill for serving as long as he did. Another sad day in Trent.
It is a shame. Thank you.
Almost done. Almost done. Finally, the Pau Mia placard is put up in the green. So, maybe we lost the gazebo, but we got the Pau Mia placard up right by the rest of the branch placards that are there. Although it was spray painted at the Veterans Memorial, I'm hoping that was taken, fixed up by now. Just another reason why that gazebo had to come down. You know, you were just glutton for punishment with that being there. This morning, I was at WSUS doing a commercial. So, on August 3rd, Saturday, August 3rd, at the fair, we will be doing a fundraiser for the Food Pantry. So, everybody who goes to the fair, I don't know what tickets are, I have no clue, but whatever your ticket is, if people could donate $1, that money will come back to the Food Pantry. That's one of the fundraisers we're doing besides Sussex County Day. And then, we have a prosecutor's meeting. I think Director Space will be with me on Friday. It was supposed to be on Monday. Didn't happen. Kind of go over what we spoke about last time at our meeting when they were here, just to kind of go over some other things and figure some stuff out, so we can make a decision in our next meeting. And that's all I have.
And we're also going to have an ARPA meeting on Friday for some of the remainder of the money that we have from the government, federal government. Okay. Division of Senior Services, Senior Day at the Fair. Senior Day at the New Jersey State Fair will be held under the Planet Networks Performing Arts Ten at the Sussex County Fairgrounds in Augusta on Thursday, August 8th, 2024, between the hours of 12 and 3. Attendees will enjoy lively entertainment, light refreshments, store prizes, and more. The Senior of the Year will be announced, and all nominees will be recognized during the event. In addition, Skylands Ride bus drivers will be recognized for their years of safe driving. Sussex County Skylands Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Those in need of transportation can call Skylands Ride at 973-579-0480. Sussex County's 10th Annual Veterans Picnic. The Division of Senior Services, Municipal Alliance, and the Veterans Committee will host the 11th Annual Veterans Picnic on Saturday, August 17th, 2024, from noon to 3 at the Hamburg Fire Department Pavilion located at State Route 23 South in Hamburg. The picnic will include live music giveaways, tables with veteran service information, and a homemade barbecue. Pre-registration is required for this event by August 12th, 2024. For additional information and to RSVP for the picnic, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1221. Peer Support Group for Sussex County Veterans. The Division of Senior Services is hosting a peer support group for Sussex County veterans. Veterans of all ages are welcome to attend this open forum on the first floor of the Sussex County Administrative Center in Newton, New Jersey, 6:00 PM, on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024. To register, please call 973-579-0555, extension 1135, or email rgero, which is R-G-E-R-O-W, at sussex nj.us. And I'm just really pleased to see this idea coming to light. And I have to thank Lorraine Hens, our deputy administrator, who normally sits over there, who's not here today, and Rayanne for stepping up to the plate as a veteran herself to get this done. That means a lot to us. And I also attended the 75th Annual High Point Memorial Service with Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Schick, and it was nice to welcome so many veterans up there, and it was so windy. Next time, I'm not wearing a dress, because it was blowing away. And I heard that happened to Dawn Fantasia, too. So, I will not be wearing a dress next year, but I look forward to attending. It was a great event. And then, like I say many times, up here sometimes we attend a lot of meetings, we just can't discuss them. So, I had a wonderful meeting yesterday with Board of Elections and, you know, looking forward to the meetings.
That's a, that's a workhorse.
Yeah. Well, they've had a turnover of their commissioners there. Three are appointed by Republicans and three appointed by the Democrats. And I want to thank Commissioner Debbie Wirth for her 14 years of service to the Board of Elections, and she's decided to retire from it. So, we're waiting for that appointment on the Republican side, and Kate Madison just retired on the Democrat side. So, they'll have another appointment, too. So, it's very interesting. Those meetings are open to the public, and you can find out when they are on the Sussex County website. And that's about all I have today. Okay. Okay. Number 10, There Is No Consent Agenda. Number 11, Regular Meeting Minutes of June 26, 2024. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
Still moved.
Sorry. Commissioner Schick and a second from Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstand?
Stand.
Okay. So motion carries. Number 12, We Don't Have Any Other Ordinances. Number 13, Appointments and/or Resignations. We have A through E. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through E?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and a second.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot. Roll call, please.
Hold on. Discussion?
A discussion?
Yeah. I just have a discussion, a little bit of a discussion. We have an opening on tech.
Yes.
Did we put that out for ad yet? Did we put that out?
Christina was going to work on getting one out.
Yeah, I was working with Holly. We'll follow up on that, make sure that gets posted.
The sooner the better.
Yes.
Right, Director?
Yes, because they don't have many, and it's hard for them to have a quorum, especially in the summer.
Yeah. So hopefully, how long does that ad have to go for?
There's no requirement.
There's no requirement, we just got to get it out there.
What do you, do you want to take like a straw poll? Can we do that to see how long we have, we're going to put it out for? Can we do it for the next meeting?
If we get, if we can get this ad out and get it on, and we can get somebody appointed.
And like by two weeks?
Because otherwise, it's not going to be till August 21st.
Right. Oh, that's our next meeting.
That's our next meeting after this next one.
The 24th or the 21st.
So if everybody's good with it, then we'll put it for the next meeting, which gives us two weeks.
Yep.
That good with you, Katie?
Yeah.
Right, works. Everybody, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
So you mean you're looking to appoint somebody at the next meeting?
Yeah, because it's been vacant for at least a month.
Yes.
And like you said, they need help there. So sooner the better, so get that ad out.
Yep.
Everybody interested out there, too?
It is a Republican seat. We have two Republicans, two Democrats, and the governor's appointment.
Okay.
So I would like to see that for the next meeting, too. Okay. Roll call, please.
Do we have any candidates currently?
I've had a few submit.
Yeah, I have someone interested that I know.
Then just put their, have them submit.
Yeah, have them submit their resume.
Send it. I gave them your email, so I could tell them.
Okay.
All right, so we have a few good, it's good status. There's one.
Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay. Resolutions. Motion to adopt resolution A through L.
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney with a second from Commissioner Schick. Any discussion?
A quick question.
Sure.
On K, with the training release, have we explored using the Department of Transportation's training facility or no?
No. Getting them scheduled was almost impossible.
Was it?
Oh, absolutely. This group, we've got two versions of this, and this company's been very responsive to it.
And then ordering another modular building, did they grow down there, the offices of emergency management?
Same one. This is the one that we had to cancel a bit on the other one, which is off the rise on the other one.
Well, then give them the plus while he's asking, that way everybody else has it.
Huh?
We'll give them, give everybody the plus.
Yeah, yeah. It worked out better. It's less money, 200 grand less than the other one.
Wait.
It was, it was a, yes. But the reason for that is because they wanted us to take possession of it once it left that shop. So basically, it got on a trailer, and it was like, okay, that's yours now. Well, something happened to it.
Local public.
Correct. So that's why we kicked it back, and it worked out in our favor by 200 grand, which was
That's a good thing.
About 12, 13% savings. So, yeah. So that, that money can go back into ARPA discussions now.
Which is good.
Yep.
Can I just ask who the motion was and the second on the resolutions, A through L?
I believe I moved that.
And I think I seconded.
If not, that's how it is.
Sorry. Okay. Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 15, Awards of Contract Change Orders Bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Award of Contract Change Orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined the adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through E?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden and a second Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 16, Financial. Payment of Bills Lists for July 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and a second from Commissioner Schick. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Obstand.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay. 17, Personnel. The Personnel Agenda for July 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the Personnel Agenda?
Still moved.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot and a second.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Schick? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay. Number 18, Ron, Administrative Report.
Just real quick, I'm going to tag along to Commissioner Carney's report about the sweeper. And I know this is not new news, but keep everybody up to date, particularly with our fellow municipalities, as mandatory sweeping is coming to them, to your county soon, your town soon. Another unfunded mandate, and you're all going to Tier 1, and that three times a year, that's the, that's the least of your worries, to have the three time a year sweeping. All the other requirements up there that are out there on that particular Tier 1 is going to be the hard work getting it together. But stay tuned, it comes next year. So the sweeping part is the easy part, but you're going to have that as well. Bridge, the bridge covering at, in Hampton that went over Parsons, that was completed last week. We replaced the entire top decking on that, so that was, that was, that was replaced. And for our fellow municipalities up here, I don't know how many are in the state healthcare plan. I hope none of you are, because the state is estimating that the premium estimate increase for state healthcare is going to be 16%. That's what the word is right now. And that's 16, here we go again, guys. It's 16% to local government, it's 10% to the state workers. That's what the proposals are going to be heard for, for tomorrow, for the increase in the premiums of state healthcare benefits. So that's all I have for tonight.
Number 19, County Council Report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Number 20, Unfinished Business. I'll ask County Council, have we heard back from the AG's office or the US Attorney on the information that we offer on our food pantry?
No.
Okay. Any other unfinished business?
The ROTC.
Yes. Dr. Homer is here to discuss information regarding the ROTC program and the college. He is filling in for Dr. Connolly. So although we've, we requested Dr. Connolly to come, he was not able to be here and was not responsive, but Dr. Homer is. So, Dr. Homer, please.
We're happy to have you. Although we're not going to cheer you on like they did at the graduation. The students love you.
I appreciate it.
I was impressed.
I appreciate it. So this evening, I just wanted to talk about the grant we're going to be moving forward with. The college is planning to submit a grant on Monday, July 15. This is part of a trio grant, it's part of the Department of Education that opens once every five years. So the grant opened at the end of June, which is why the timeline seems restrictive for us. So it's a five-year grant, $272,000 every year, for five years, no matching requirements.
Two, I'm sorry, 275 for five years?
There's 272, 314 for five years.
275, that's good, every year.
Perfect. Yep, every year, so it's like 1.3, you round it off, you know, for five years. So there was a number of different angles the college could have taken with this. It's for student support services, so a lot of folks spent money on this in the United States on disadvantaged students economically, but it says, there's 18 awards across the entire nation of this program. And we feel that we wanted to target our military-affiliated students and our veterans with this money. And we feel that we are strategically positioned at the tri-states of Pennsylvania, New York, and New Jersey here for a federal grant, bringing a large federal grant like that, as well as having a career and technical education programs for our vets who don't want to transfer for a bachelor's degree, they want it. We have a lot of student veterans that go right into welding, or electrical line work, or automotive, or diesel, and that's not, a lot of colleges can't offer that, but we can. So we have roughly 100 student veterans every semester at the college. What we are seeing is, and this is a quick aside, we are seeing a big uptick of active military and reservists. It's part of the college as well, too. So we do a lot with the flexibility for that. So adding on to kind of everything we've done for our military-affiliated and our veteran students, and I just made, I'm not a big list person, and I don't read from notes, but I'm going too quick just to make the point here. So the college has, you know, moved strategically in this direction over the last, you know, it's five, seven years, but this, we have a student veteran learning lounge with computer printing accessibility for all of our veterans, a student veteran emergency fund we fundraised for. And so like last year, for instance, we had a homeless veteran that we paid for a hotel for a week. You know, we had a veteran, we paid their electric bill, you know, for a month, or rent, they can't make rent payments. These are all things that our veterans would essentially stop going to college to take care of, like many of us would. So we have this fund, and we fundraised for that through our Spring 5K we do at the local Newman VFW, and just got a $1,000 check from them today on that. It was a great partnership, great initiative, homegrown, it was nice. Our Veteran, our Veteran Appreciation Game, our baseball game every spring, so we bring in, you know, $25,000 to $3,000 to that program. And it sits there until a student veteran needs it, and we have a process for that. So we have, the dedicated student veteran advisor at the college to help lead students through the challenges that they're facing. We have the Salute National Honor Society for our student veterans. So we have paid inductees this year as a National Honor Society for our student veterans who completed a degree with us. We offered last year a free Veterans Day dinner for any veteran and their family that wanted to come for free at the college. It was hosted by our college folks in the Student Center Theater, and that was in a partnership with the Senior Services Division. I did it last year. And we just signed on to a commitment for the Keys of Student Veteran Success. I'm not going to read the keys, but if you want to know, I can tell you. But essentially, it is creating a student veteran and military-friendly ecosystem at the college. And so now, all that background, here's what the grant's for. So we have all this going on already, and now we really want to ramp things up. We've been in conversations with Seton Hall University for the last five years, I'd say. Seton Hall University holds an ROTC program, an Army ROTC program on their campus. There's branch campuses at Montclair State University and Ramapo University as well, too. So because Seton Hall holds that, that has to be congressionally approved, and it's easier if Seton Hall holds it rather than the college looking to do this ourselves. So we've been in conversations with Lieutenant Bragg down at Seton Hall. And so the grant essentially will be for bringing on an instructor for an ROTC program to bring an ROTC program to our college. There's nothing in the Northwest here for our students, and if they want to go to Seton Hall, it's over 40 miles from here, maybe a little bit further. So not only that, this grant will also provide tutors for our student veterans with math, reading specifically for them. It'll bring on a mental health counselor for student veterans. I mean, overseeing the veteran, student veterans now, that's something I've been appalled at, actually. We have one counselor that covers, I don't know how many counties and how many cases, and with my background being in clinical psychology, it's abysmal to think that your caseload is in the thousands. And so what we would like to do is bring on a counselor to specifically support our veterans in-house. Right now, we have a great program with the Bloomfield Veterans Resource Center, and so we have somebody on campus once a week for our student veterans if they want to meet individually or in groups. And then the other, the last piece of this, the last piece of this is for basic grant support for our students, so if they need a calculator, if they need books, whatever they need, essentially, to remove as many obstacles and barriers as possible for these students. So that's our grant. What I'm, what we're seeking is just simply a letter of support. We don't need a resolution or anything for the grant submission. A letter of support from the county, just saying that you're supportive of the project and submission. We're seeking grants out from, seeking letters of support from Seton Hall University that I just received this morning, local VFWs, to make it, to make it round out kind of our student veteran ecosystem we're trying to build at the college. Look at that. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Sounds good. I'm sure we'd love to have a letter drafted and sent.
Yeah, they, they presented a draft, so I can resend that to everyone if anyone didn't get it, and then as long as the board is okay.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a question or two or three?
Yes, sir.
This isn't matching, right?
This is not, there's no matching.
And what happens if you don't use it all, the two, seven, five, if I go back?
We are very good in our grant management. We don't send it.
What I like to hear, we don't give anything back.
You know, it's funny, what we do actually is when folks do send it back, we try to scoop it right back up. So we're always asking when the second tranches of these grants coming through, knowing that folks are going to under spend, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming, number one. That's important that you do.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you guys do at the college.
Thank you.
You're always improving the college. It's just gone up from when I was younger, going, not going there, but my friends going there. We just make it better and better, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All you do.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any other unfinished business? Number 21, New Business.
Yes, we have a resolution that we'd like to, I'd like to get a motion tonight to get approved, and it's for a grant for the sheriff's office. Their body cameras are going out of life and being able to transfer for storage, and we have representatives from the sheriff's office that can explain all of that. But to give you the synopsis of this, this is one of these grants that pop up, and it catches us in between meetings. We don't have enough time to get everything together because it's due like next week, so we couldn't get it on last meeting, so it's got to hit this one. So it's all for the right reasons. It is a matching grant. It's a 91,000, it's a 91,000 grant, it's a 91,000 match, which the sheriff can take out of his capital budget, and it would be to totally replace their body cameras that it's in the life. But you guys can tell us the technical side of that, but that's the synopsis that we're in right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Under Sheriff Matthew Avadetti. I'm the administrative under sheriff at the sheriff's office. This is my confidential assistant, Mark Lospinuso. Mark just identified this grant very recently. He constantly comes to the internet looking for grants that do apply to us. He was, we were lucky enough that he found it when he did. Immediately saw that it was applicable to us, and he had contacted Millennium, who would, worked with us, Katie Cotcher, and she was great to work with. Mark is spearheading this. Any questions that you may have, he could probably answer it better than I can. But the operating, the funds that you mentioned earlier, we actually identified them out of the operating.
Oh, you already got them identified?
Yes, we already have them. Sent them to Elka.
Okay.
Still waiting for her impressions of them. But basically, what we did was looked at our personnel that utilize body more cameras, which are in our Office of Emergency Management, the jail, and also the Sheriff's Division of Law Enforcement. And I took from those budgets, according to the number of personnel that will be utilizing the cameras. But this is a program that was mandated, again, another unfunded mandate. It's not going away, and I can foresee this only growing in size. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, or Mark, if you have anything to say.
Just basically, it's going to change everything that we do from a hard-based system to a cloud-based system. We'll get cameras upgraded, included in our quote, every two years, so we won't have to come back and keep badgering. It's a five-year run on the contract. The grant is for three years, and we can reapply again in two, to cover the rest of it. It is a matching grant. The total expenditures for the match would be $91,225, and it's far less than what we would have that way if we did the whole thing.
Right. Considering you guys already found the money?
Yes, we have.
And anything to protect yourselves, your officers, and the public. I'm all for it.
Is that live feed?
No.
That's not.
I'm surprised they don't have live feed. Not yet. Like I said, it's probably expanding. That may very well be something that comes in the future.
You know what I mean? Like, all of a sudden, you see something happen, it's, instead of a response, or an officer goes down, it's like, I saw that go, you know, I saw him go down, or her go down. We got to get there.
Problem with that is you have to have somebody watching that live feed.
Right. On every officer, at the same time.
So the good, the good news, the news on this is, they're going to have to replace them anyway, right? So we get a grant, it offsets half of that, that's a good day.
And they already have found the money in their operating budget, so.
Again, kudos to you guys. Nice job.
I certainly can't say no to that. Okay.
We appreciate it.
So what do we, what do we need here? Do we need a motion to accept the application of the, of the grant?
A motion, yes. A motion to, for the resolution.
A motion to approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution.
For the submission of the grant.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution for the submission of the grant for the body
A motion to approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution.
For the submission of the grant.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution for the submission of the grant for the body cameras for the sheriff?
Still moved.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner Hayden, a second. Any discussion?
Nice job. Nice catch.
Roll call, please. Commissioner DeGroot.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Commissioner Schick.
Yes.
Director Space.
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney.
Yes.
Again, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Number 22. Public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Schick and a deputy, Deputy Director Carney, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.